Good evening and welcome. Good evening and welcome. Jason, how's that? Silibants. Jason, can you hear me okay? Good evening to you, Jason, and welcome. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council and fire hazard to order. Today is Wednesday, July 9th, 2025, and it's 6:30 PM. We're going to start with our Nisonnan tribal recognition, and I'm going to ask Council Member Fernandez to read the land recognition.
We acknowledge that the Nisonnan people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Nisonnan land that was never ceded, and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nisonnan land, we support the Nevada City Rancheria Nisonnan Tribe in their efforts to stabilize their people, as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thank you, Daniela. I'm going to ask our new Vice Mayor to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Lou. All right, we're going to proceed with the roll call. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Get your crowd in order, sir.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sisi?
Here.
Mayor Klein?
Here. Now it's time for the adoption of the agenda. Council, now's the time for any agenda modifications. Would you like to make any additional changes to the agenda? Pull consent items, or do we have any recusals to announce?
Not here.
I didn't think so. I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Sisi and a second by Councilmember Fleming. Those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to start with presentations. We have a presentation, I believe, from Sean, our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we do every year, this is a presentation on the City Council Mayor-Vice Mayor reorganization. It's the...
Hey.
Hey, sounds good. This is the official action that's in your packet that tomorrow we will send out to all of the other entities, because Nevada City has to be a little bit different. So, we change our mayor once a year in July. Grass Valley changes once every two years in January. The Board changes once every year in January. So, we're all a little bit different. This is the reorganization in Nevada City. So, quite simply, we have three council members, as always, but their names have changed on the plaque. Councilmember Former Mayor Peterson, not with us this evening. He landed in Sacramento about 5 o'clock tonight, so if any of you have an over-under on when he'll show up, then, you know, we'll be keeping a tally outside. But he wanted to be here this evening. Councilmember Fernandez, Councilmember Fleming, both former mayors as well, and our new Vice Mayor Lou Sisi, and Mayor Adam Klein. That's the official part. Welcome to the new council. Same as the old council, just in different seats. I love that you're all here with us for another year, and I will hand it back to you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. This is... It's been an honor to serve for the last three years. I'm excited about this year. Bye, Gwendi. She's coming back, right?
We've got a seat for her.
Yeah. Can we auction off Gary's seat?
I'd like another lady up here.
True. Thanks to y'all for coming. This is extremely sweet, and I'll have some remarks later in the evening. Lou, Doug, Daniela, anything you'd like to say about this reorganized council?
We work well together.
I agree.
It seems very well-organized.
I'd like another woman.
Got to talk to the voters.
Are there any voters here? Great. Shall we proceed to the proclamation?
Sure.
All right. We've got a Plastic-Free July 2025 proclamation. Normally Shirley would be here to accept this. Should I give it to my friend Chris Newsom instead? I'm going to read it first, and then I'll give it to you. Whereas Americans represent 4% of the world's population, but generate more than 12% of the world's refuse, discarding more than 30 million tons of plastic each year, but only recycling 6% of it, and whereas microplastics, plastic particles less than 5 millimeters across, end up in waterways and oceans where they are introduced to the food chain, and can attract and retain toxic chemicals such as bisepinol A, most commonly known as BPAs, and pesticides that bioaccumulate in our food, and whereas 80% of marine debris comes from land-based sources, primarily trash or litter in urban runoff, and with the increasing rate of plastics entering the oceans by 2050, there will be by weight more plastic than fish in the oceans of the world. Don't like it. Whereas plastic pollution is causing a public health crisis through the ubiquitous presence of microplastics in the water cycle, including alpine snowfall in the Rocky Mountains, human bodies, and soils, and whereas Plastic-Free July is a global movement that helps millions of people be part of the solution to plastic pollution, so we can have cleaner streets, oceans, and beautiful communities, and whereas the 2025 Plastic-Free July campaign focuses on small changes each of us can make to reduce plastic waste under the slogan "Small Steps, Big Difference," and whereas limiting plastic consumption effectively reduces Nevada City's contribution to climate change, but also symbolically conveys the larger trend of a shift toward the use of renewable resources and green living. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Nevada City does hereby declare July 2025 to be Plastic-Free July. We encourage all residents, visitors, and staff to support and recognize the need to decrease single-use plastic waste in our community. We support choosing reusable alternatives to single-use plastics, making purchases meaningful by seeking products packaged without plastic, sourcing food and products locally where possible, and learning about what resources exist in Nevada City and Nevada County for recycling, compost, and individual waste reduction. Dated this 9th day of July 2025, I still need to sign it. Please hold. Chris, stand by. Okay, Chris, I'm going to present this to you. Please, in front of the podium, so people at home can hear you.
If you would like to learn more about the role of plastics in causing something called plasticosis, which we are all subject to, come to a presentation on July 23rd at the Community Room at Briar Patch, where there will be three experts in the field. Plasticosis.
The greatest of all time. It's time for public comment. Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that any member of the public may address the City Council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on the consent calendar and each agenda item at the time it is heard. Do we have any public comment? Yes, please.
I'm Mary Bilesdaley. I live on Drummond Street in Nevada City, and I just want to say, let the wild adventure begin. Welcome, Adam Klein.
We're unable to comment on the wild adventure? Is there any other public comment? On any matters not on the agenda? Man, usually when it's this many, they're yelling at us. This is phenomenal. I'm going to take a roll call vote on the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Before we take action on the consent calendar, we will hear any public comment on consent calendar items only. Do we have any public comment on consent items? Okay, I'm now looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar.
I move that we approve this consent calendar.
I second.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Fernandez, a second by Vice Mayor Sisi. Any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, to business, to business.
You want me to take it?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this is your consideration of our Resolution 2025-29. It's a resolution of the City Council approving the appointment of City Council members to internal and external committees and regional bodies for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Basically, there are 14 external committees and bodies ranging from Nevada County Transportation Commission to everyone's favorite Solid and Hazardous Waste Commission, through regional housing, a variety of functions that the council members are appointed to, that the community doesn't really see you doing, but hears about in your comments at the end of every meeting. Since we have a new cycle, a new appointment of a new mayor, the mayor has the option to appoint members to these committees. I know that you've worked through this. Everyone knows what their assignments are going to be, and it's happy with them. In addition to those 14 external committees and commissions, there are three internal committees. Our Economic and Community Development Committee, which largely handles our housing, vibrancy, and business-related initiatives, and our Community Services Committee, which largely handles our parks, public works, and public safety activities, as well as our Fire Safety Advisory Committee, which in addition to five local community members appointed to that committee, have two council members appointed to each of those three committees. Who is assigned to what is in the packet? Again, we will transmit this to everybody and their brother tomorrow, including those 14 external agencies, because nobody else is changing on this cycle, so we'll be the ones that will have to replace board members effective tomorrow. I'm excited that there's not a ton of changes on here. I appreciate the meaningful changes that are on here, but I'm excited for this year to come, and I look forward to the community getting an opportunity to hear about all the things you do outside of this room that make the actions you take in this room even more powerful for our community, and in collaboration with our partners in the city and town and county. That's all I have for you this evening. We'd recommend that you adopt the resolution.
Thanks, Sean. Do we take public comment at this time on this? Would anyone like to give any public comment on this item? It's shocking, it's shocking. We'll bring it back to the table. Councilmember Fleming, anything?
I just think that you did a great job in reallocating all the positions on the committee, so thank you, so far.
Thank you very much for your honesty during this difficult time.
I see that they actually mostly stayed the same. So, thank you for the continuity. I think it's really great that we're able to... I was just saying, I appreciate continuity, and it really allows council members to build on what is done before. I always say government moves really, really slow, so to have just a year on a committee sometimes is problematic. To have two is fantastic, three is even better, and four is great. So, thank you.
What are we talking about?
Hey, man. We're talking about the committee assignments and so forth.
Cool. I really like the structure. I think one of the things that's been really interesting in particular with these committees, since the strategic plan, we actually assigned council members to these committees, so that we actually willingly took on more work than many councils do anywhere you see, where we actually have Brown Act responsibility for a variety of meetings. But what that does is allows us to open this up to the community for participation in ways that really broaden the opportunity for us to hear our community, to hear what you think about the topics, the really important topics that we've taken on, and it works really well, and it is a ton of work, but it is worth it in every bit of what we do. So, and I'm happy to take whatever they gave me. No, I know what I... I know what I got, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Vice Mayor?
I look at the committees as the primary portal through which the public tells us what they want and how they want it done, and I'm very happy with my assignments. Thank you.
I just really quick want to thank Doug for taking on the Fire Safety Advisory Committee, which is, I think, the most important one, and Lou for his three years on that committee. Thank you guys. It's extremely important work.
Yeah, I'm excited to work with Gary on this committee. It's going to be fun.
Cool. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Do I have to read it in full? Okay.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay. I've got a motion by Councilmember Fernandez and a second by Councilmember Fleming. Do we have a roll call?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sisi?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. All done.
The suspense is killing me.
So, usually these meetings are maybe two and a half hours, three hours long. We're not doing that to you. We're not sure why you're here, but we appreciate your presence. So, we'll proceed with... Sean, any reports or future agenda items?
I will forego my normal reporting this evening and carry it over to our next meeting, which is July 24th, which is a Thursday, because we moved to avoid hot summer nights, which are amazing on Wednesdays here in the downtown. Lynn, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, somewhere in the room, thank you, Lynn, for everything you do and your volunteers that make those things happen. And then First Friday Art Walk is coming up, of course, for July. It's the second Friday, because 4th of July was the first Friday, so come out for that as well, including the piano that all of you had to walk past. You came in, the door will be out front being painted and played, and you can participate by either helping us play or helping us paint it. So, all of you in the room have to do that now. And that's all I have this evening. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Sean. Gary? Anything?
No, I'm in the right time zone. That's good. I woke up this morning in Santa Fe.
Yeah.
So, no, let's see. We had a committee... I'm looking forward to working with Doug on the committees, but I think everything's moving fine. I've got nothing to say. Let's party.
I'm glad you made it.
Me too. Let's party.
Okay. Daniela?
Yeah, I was happy to fill in for Councilmember Vice Mayor Sisi today at the Transportation Commission. Nothing new to report, except that later, later this year, there's going to be a lot of construction on 49 from south to north in all the ways, but we'll keep you up to date on all of that stuff. Met with the Jedi Committee, Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, and nothing new yet to report there, but soon for sure. And it's my girlfriend Jana's birthday tomorrow. I'm excited to be busting out of this town with her. Thank you. And that's all I got.
Thanks. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I am very pleased to report that you have not once called me councilman in this meeting. Thank you.
That's it?
Wow.
We're being good. We're being nice to you today.
Okay, okay. I've got some remarks. You guys familiar with the Muppets?
It's a lot of pages.
Yeah, sorry. They're pretty big.
12?
At the end of like every Muppet movie, there's always a shot where there's just too many Muppets in the screen, and it's overwhelming to look at.
That's what this is.
Don't know why I brought it up. I think it's past you, Auntie Jen. Friends, family, remarkable people. I want to start by thanking my colleagues and city staff for the last three years. I lucked out. The city before Lou and I joined hired our excellent city manager, Sean Grayson. Go Miners. And our outstanding police chief, Dan Foss. Good guys. Whatever success we've had, we would not have had without those great hiring decisions and the ones that followed. I'm going to say some nice things about my colleagues now. Doug's not only a grant writer and has been a great help to the city using that skillset, but he's also the only one of the five of us raising a kid. Which is such a valuable perspective to have. The reminder that what we're doing here isn't about us, it's about who's next. Daniela, as our regular viewers may have noticed, is an activist. Through and through. She's passionate, committed to justice, social, and otherwise, and we're living through a time when activists are more necessary than ever, and we're lucky that she's serving here. Gary just had a stellar, mostly punctual year as mayor, and through his life of service knows so much about how a city actually runs, and that's been great for the city, not just for his year as mayor, but his entire time on the council. I was fortunate to have him as my landlord 50... 15 years ago. When neither one of us anticipated this. So, after I left Commercial Street, I moved into Gary's house on Park. You guys remember when I lived on Commercial Street, the parties? I was fortunate, again, to serve as his vice mayor much more recently, like a week and a half ago. So, thanks again, Gary, for all the work you've done for the city. Which brings me to Lou, a good and decent man who will serve as your vice mayor for the next 12 months. He's steady and guided by his values and his faith, and without fail gives the best speech every June when we raise the pride flag above City Hall. I think it's a well-rounded, very functional council, and I'm thankful for that every day. My introduction to the concept of a Nevada City mayor was in sixth grade. Some people are ahead of me. When the mayor at the time, Paul Mattson... It's crazy. It says, "Hold for applause," but it's in Paul's handwriting. He would visit his wife at the time, my teacher at Seven Hills Middle School, Penny Mattson, and it says, "Hold for a standing ovation." Paul would bring his acoustic guitar to the classroom and lead the students in songs from the 1960s. As far as I knew, that's what the mayor did. Like, whereas, the mayor's duties include introducing local kids to the songs of the Beatles and the band. And that seemed right to me. It was without a doubt a formative experience, and what it said about this place has stuck with me, especially once I got older and realized how strange and special that was. Talk amongst yourselves. Another moment in time that stuck with me is the night of December 14th, 2010. Joanna Newsom, a child of Nevada City, a strong contender for the definitive child of Nevada City, performed her song "On a Good Day" on The Late Show with David Letterman. That same night, two fellows from our community, Dan Elkin and John Sortland, performed the song "The Ghost Inside" with the band Broken Bells on Conan O'Brien's show. That was the same night. Three of our kids, they're not my actual kids, they're... playing music on national television to an audience of millions of people. The next day, I was stunned. Our newspaper hadn't noticed, our radio stations hadn't noticed. We're this big. What are the odds that in one night, three people who grew up here would share their considerable talents on two big stages with the whole country? Rolling Stone magazine did have a story with the headline, "Broken Bells Go Big on Conan. Joanna Newsom Confounds Letterman." To be fair, I think he was mostly confounded by the set decor, but they didn't notice that three of the musicians that they were talking about were from the same weird little town, and why would Rolling Stone notice if we didn't notice? Friends, this radicalized me. Noah Georgson, a Nevada City boy, has mixed and engineered albums that won two Latin Grammys. Knowing as we do our glaring demographic deficiencies, Nevada City seems like the city least likely to produce a two-time Latin Grammy winner. But nevertheless, friends, the numbers don't lie. He did that, and they're beautiful records. Alila Diana, singer-songwriter who grew up here, is big in France, by which I mean she's properly big in France, and when she's playing a packed enormous venue in Paris, she's singing songs she wrote when she lived on Commercial Street, two-minute walk from where we are right now. Josh Newman, Nevada Union graduate, plays cello in Brandy Carlisle's band, with whom he performed at the White House. he performed at the White House. And it does feel important to clarify, the Obama White House. And huge venues all over the world. Guion Riley, who sang baritone with me in Don Baggett's Nevada Union Concert Choir in 1995, is Paul Simon's guitarist on his current tour. I'm scratching the surface here. Hunter, which countries did you perform in in the last year or so?
Let's see. Canada, the United States, and Brazil.
Awesome. How big were the audiences generally?
Brazil was 70,000 people.
See, that's impressive. I don't even know 70,000 Brazilians.
70,000 here.
There are gold and platinum records up on Nevada City walls, there are Grammys and MTV Video Music Awards on Nevada City shelves, our buddy Marie Su touring all the time, the outstanding two-runner, touring all the time. And it's not just about people who've become a big deal elsewhere. Locals know that one of the best songwriters of his generation can hook you up with quality meats at SPD most days of the week. What's his name?
Brett Shady!
You're damn right. He's the flawless album. I even heard tell that a few years back, we had a singing mailman in Nevada City with a voice like an angel. What's his name?
Nancy!
Let me consult really quick with our deputy city attorney. Nancy, is it accurate to say that Brett Shady has the voice of an angel?
Like an angel, yes.
It's great to get that settled once and for all legally. Our pal Davia isn't able to be here tonight because she's recording in LA, the only acceptable reason for missing this speech. Beyond the homegrown talent, we've attracted artists, honest to God, heroes of mine, like Jonathan Richman and Roger Hodgson, who came and lived and played here for a while, and Utah Phillips, who stuck around and contributed to this community in immeasurable ways. It feels significant and worth mentioning that our city has just assumed responsibility to keep the Miners Foundry going, that beautiful cultural center, and importantly, a great all-ages venue. If you grew up here, you know the importance of that space and what would be lost without it. That's where I first saw cake. They should come back. We're part of a state-designated cultural district, and we should... That should be celebrated. Let's lean into that. My dad once called Nevada City "a nice place to live for old people and their parents." And we should be a nice place to live for those folks, but we shouldn't just be that. I recognize and appreciate we're a tourist town, but I'm all for people visiting because of what we are now rather than what we were then. People interested in Gold Rush history and fans of our amazing-looking downtown are going to keep showing up, and they should, and I hope they do, but I'm thinking it would be good for us if the people who live here and the people who don't live here start thinking of us as a place where music comes from. And I expect the Chambers of Commerce of Nashville and Detroit would back up my conclusion, but it's not about that. I'm prouder of the beauty we've shared with the world in recent years than I am with what was done to this place and the people already living in this place 175 years ago in the name of greed. Looking at this current precarious time in our country's history, I could see someone thinking that shining a light on our musical output doesn't quite rise to the urgency of the moment, and while I wouldn't entirely disagree, I'd tell them this, that Kurt Vonnegut said, "No matter how corrupt, greedy, and heartless our government, our corporations, our media, our religious and charitable institutions may become, the music will still be wonderful." End quote. And if those words don't have enough bite for you, please consult the four words written on the front of Woody Guthrie's guitar. Google it if you need to. I'm not going to say it here. They'd put me on a list. When it feels like the world is being run by a power-sharing agreement between the sinister and the stupid, every song is a protest song. And we've got songs. This council is going to keep working to make our city more fire-safe. We're going to keep making sure that quality water comes out of your faucets, and we're going to keep pursuing multiple ways to increase our housing stock, because a city this wonderful and strange, where there's always music in the air, deserves that. But here's my ask for the next 12 months. Be proud that you live in a place that puts beauty out into the world in the here and now. Go out and support our artists, attend some concerts this year. Better yet, play some concerts this year. As I've established, statistically speaking, if you're in this room, you're most likely a wildly talented musician. Share our music with your friends who have the misfortune of living anywhere else. Let them know what Nevada City's about. This will be our year of advanced music appreciation. In case anybody's worried, I promise I won't ever sing at a city council meeting, but if any sixth-grade teachers at Seven Hills are hearing this, yes, I will come to your classroom and teach my depressing political songs to your baffled students. Now, let's defy national trends and have a good year. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. I can't see that.